Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice captured and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency and master point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the one and all people as the traditional custodians of this land we're meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. Today, we have a council prayer. Pastor Michael Anaway from Currie-Currie Baptist Church, so invite Pastor Anaway forward. Councillors, please stand.
Pastor Michael Anaway from Currie-Currie Baptist Church, thank you very much for this opportunity. Please bow with me. Our most gracious God, the God who longs for us to acknowledge him as Father. We pray that you would be with the councillors tonight as they deliberate here in the city of Cessnock. Father for all of those who are present, give them wisdom and understanding to direct their work and influence their decisions so that A, your glory would be advanced and B, the safety and welfare of this city, our community and indeed the Hunter Valley would be at their heart. We thank you for their hard work, their dedication and their persistence in what they do. Present them with peace, happiness, wisdom and understanding and may you establish amongst us the work of your son Jesus. In his precious name we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Anaway. Now move on to apologies, there are no apologies, no requests for leave. Confirmation of the previous minutes, moved councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. No debate, we'll put that, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Jurd and Saval, those against councillor Olson, I'll declare it carried. Moving on to disclosures of interest. No disclosures of interest, no petitions that I'm aware of. Move on to public address. Speaking on report WI forty-seven twenty twenty-three regarding the renaming of Apex Park, we have Mr Bob Bedford, former councillor and deputy mayor, speaking against the recommendation. So invite Mr Bedford forward to the lectern. Thank you Bob, you have three minutes.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, councillors, directors, staff and general public. I come here tonight on a matter that has upset me and a lot of other fellow past Apexians and life members of Apex. The fact is that Apex was in this town for quite a number of years. And like most clubs, it's finding it hard to keep numbers up, to keep people going and it, the club folded in Cessnock. But that doesn't mean Apex is finished. At this stage, there's still more than a hundred and fifty clubs out there operating around Australia and Apex is a club that's Australian and it's the only club that was founded in Australia. It was founded in nineteen thirty-one by three gentlemen in Victoria. And it's really built on citizenship and service to your community. And I think Cessnock Apex done a very good job of that. We've got the park set up down there in Cessnock. We built the original furniture in the park. We built a shed to house our casha can, which at times was the first recycling of aluminium cans. We also housed our catering caravan and we catered for Cessnock show, lots of other things around. We always run a cracker night at the showground. We've done a lot of things for the town, also the BMX park at Bellbird, Carmichael Park. Cessnock Apex built that. There's numerous other things that we've done around the town. Also, I suppose you wouldn't really know, but Apex itself set up the free milk for kids at the school to get their levels up and it was, a lot of other things like the Civilian Widderays Association was set up by Apex. So I feel that while Apex at this moment isn't operating in this town, I think you'll find there's other clubs that won't be operating in this town. So I think it'd be very, very unfair to rename the park that's always been known as Apex Park to another name. And whilst I say that, it's a little bit tongue in cheek because I am a Rotarian. But it's, yeah, I'm, I am devoted to Cessnock. I only picked this up because I was reading through the minutes of the council, which I still had a bit of a look and thinking, you silly buggers, you're coming here to do this and cop everything from all the people here. And I look out in the, in the audience and I see similar faces. So I'll cut it short, I think I've said enough to what I want to say. I've spoke to a lot of ex-Apexians and shall we say this is just the first shot? Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you go, Bob, any questions, Mr Bedford, councillor Olson?
Thanks, thanks Bob. When I first come on to council, you're already a councillor here and we have many debates about many different issues. The thing I want to ask you about is Apex Park, it says in here it was named in nineteen sixty-four Apex Park. That was authorised by Cessnock council, I'm assuming?
It sure was and actually one of our, one of our main members was the engineer here at council, Graham Robinson.
Oh yeah, remember him, yeah. The other thing is, like, if, as a council, if we were to, I don't think it's fair that we're taking your name away to put another name there. How would you feel if we were to move it tonight, that we supported changing the name from Apex to Rotary? Where would that leave your club and your, your club, basically the members of still exist in Cessnock?
Well, I think that's really a bit of a dirty thing. The thing is that, could you imagine going to Harold Sternback Park and say, well, Harold's gone, we'll change the name? Or if we went to Turner Park, which was a very, very well-respected people in the town? And also the councillor, I think he might have even been mayor or deputy mayor at one stage and we changed that? But like, it's just not on. Like, it's there, it's history. Now, I travel around Australia a lot and nearly every town I go to has got an Apex Park. And if I can get to go to an Apex meeting, I go to one. But geez, surprising, a lot of them are gone. But the park still exists. So that's.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Bob.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, thanks Bob for coming today, I appreciate it. Would you not say that the clubs, not just the Apex, all the other clubs like Lions and Rotary are doing it very hard for members?
Extremely hard. I'm a member of Sunrise at Currie and I would think that we're down to six members. It's not good. I think even Cessnock Rotary, I was reading in the paper not that long ago, it was down to three members. I don't know what they've got now. Because it's, look, it's very hard. People are very time short to go to these things, plus it's quite expensive. So, you know, not only do you serve the community, it costs you to do it.
And also, would you say that the Apex Park itself is a lot more heritage than half the rest of them that are here today?
Well, I'd say for sure. You know, I know we said that Rotary lost their park when, when we sold the town hall. But it really wasn't a full Rotary park at the time. It was a fact that the RSL sold the RSL Hall and the RSL thing in Vincent Street to the miners' credit union and all those plaques had nowhere to go. And I think council sorted that out and Rotary took over that. It was a circular thing that was in there with a, I think it might have been a water feature in the middle of it. But there was no real park there.
Okay Bob, thanks mate and I appreciate you coming and also for giving us a history lesson.
Thanks mate.
Thanks mate.
Councillor Sander.
Thank you, thank you Bob. I appreciate you being here today to show your passion for that, for the park. I have a passion for that park as well because there was a lot of stuff that we actually as a council did in that park. One of the things was the arboretum in the, across the bridge there where the children go across to the pool. So yes, I appreciate you being here today and showing good support for the old Apexians in town. Because like you say, if there's somebody that, someone that did pass, so yeah, I do appreciate you being here, thank you.
Thank you, thank, let's, thank Mr Bedford. Okay, we'll now deal with item WI forty-seven twenty twenty-three, councillor Sander.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I would like to put up an alternate recommendation. There it is. That council do not support the proposal to rename Apex Park to Cessnock Rotary Park and that council in consultation with Cessnock Rotary Club identifies locations that may be suitable to establish a new Cessnock Rotary Park in the city.
So is the motion seconded, councillor Moors? No debates, put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Now moving on to consideration adoption of reports by Englobo. All reports, I believe, have been removed. Notice of intention to deal with matters in confidential session. Someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander, speaking councillor Olson.
Question to the general manager for my first, the, this is, this motion tonight, the code of conduct, complaining about myself, he was number seven of this term of council. But number six hasn't come back to council, can I ask why that hasn't come back yet and that was finalised months ago?
Through you Mr Mayor. Every report that's come back has been presented to council, the ones that are outstanding have not come back to council.
That's incorrect, I've got the final report here for number six, sitting here right in my hand and it was finalised, final investigation report on eleventh of July two thousand and twenty-three. So do you want to take that on notice and find out why it hasn't come back to council, please?
We'll have to take that on notice then.
Yeah, thank you. The next question I have is for this investigation tonight, did all councillors get a copy of the work dynamic report about the investigation, on my?
Did all councillors get a copy of the investigation report?
Thank you, yes, all councillors were provided with a copy of the investigation report at the last meeting of council and the report to this meeting.
I can't hear you, can you have to speak up here please?
All councillors were provided a copy of the final investigation report as part of the agenda for the last meeting of council. However, as councillor Olson was absent, the report was deferred to this meeting and the report was updated to say that the report, the final investigation report had been previously provided and I had a few councillors ring in saying they had disposed of the document and they were provided with an additional replacement one.
So that was supplied at the last meeting, is that, that's the answer I'm getting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, look, I'm still not going to support this going into confidential session, I don't care what, what anyone says. If I'm getting branded to be a bad person, I still think that the general public need to know how bad I am and why I'm getting censured on a regular basis. It's disappointing that we have to hide behind closed doors on an issue that I'm quite prepared to face the public with and answer to the public. At this point in time, I'm never allowed to talk to the public about why we're spending thirty-five, on average around thirty-five thousand dollars on all these investigations and this is number seven in this term of council. And I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be more in the next couple of months and if there is more, then more money being wasted because it hasn't achieved anything.
Moving that way, all those in favour. Councillor Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, those against. Councillor Moors, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Meryl Minnet, moving MM nine twenty twenty-three regarding council making a submission to the government in regards to the new proposed New South Wales regional development, regional development roadmap and trust fund. Happy to put that forward as is. Councillor Olson.
Yeah, how's this, how much money has the state government, if this is state government, is not going to be funding this council over the next term of council?
This is a thing about making a submission to a policy, we don't know what their, their platform is. What's clear is they've said they're not continuing the resources for regions grant programme and I want to make sure that whatever the policy that replaces it, which is as they've outlined, this regional development trust fund is something that, that actually provides the same amount of funding to our community, if not more. So that's why I want to make a submission to it, so I don't think anyone's.
So our, our current state government is not going to fund the resources for regions because the government is broke or too much debt. And so now we're going to make a submission to them to say, keep funding us. Have we got our state member Clayton Bar on site?
Just to clarify what you're, you're saying is, no, they've said that, they haven't said they're not going to keep funding us. What they've said is they're changing the funding programme. So one funding programme was called resources.
Point of order, in your first point there, it says the council notes the resources for region grant funding has been discontinued.
Yes, yeah.
So it's been discontinued.
That's right.
Right, so what we're talking about now is a different system they're going to fund us on.
Yes.
Which is, which is, I'm trying to work out, and my question I asked you was, have we got our state member on board?
This is about making a submission, we need to provide that submission to.
Have we spoken to our state member?
No.
Why not?
Because we haven't got the roadmap or the submission, this is, council haven't developed our submission to work out the exact funding we, we got under that programme, what the criteria for the new funding programme is, what we actually want to achieve out of it. And that's why I'm asking council staff to go away and make this submission that we can then provide to the government, which would be including our state member.
So, so our state member hasn't been spoken to, to, who is our voice in parliament. We haven't got any information about where, how they're going to fund us anymore. They're going to, they've canned the resources for regions and we're putting in a submission to get the same funding or more funding, but we don't know how, the criteria for how it's going to work. So we've put a submission in without speaking to anyone and we're just going to hope that we get more money.
This submission.
I have no problem supporting your motion, but I'm just thinking that we're going around in circles here because the state government is broken, they're looking at ways and same as the federal government, saying tonight they're going to be a trillion dollars in debt very soon. That, I, I just see that we're going in blind and we have no idea what they're going to do. So yeah, we'll put it up, but I just don't think it's going to generate anything unless we have our state member in there barking for us instead of not speaking to him before we even put a submission in, it's disappointing.
Councillor Olson, can I just clarify on, on that, I think there's some confusion on your part about where this is up to. This isn't a submission for funding. So this isn't an application for funding, the government has says, we are developing the terms of reference for this new funding bucket of money. We've got this money and we're developing the terms of reference for that bucket of money about how councils and other organisations are going to receive it. And so we're putting a submission to make sure the terms of reference are actually something that suits the needs of councils. We'll go through, I think it's already been done, it's now they're developing the terms of reference, so councillor Burke is.
Yeah, thank you Mr Mayor, I, I do support your Meryl Minnet and I think that you're right, there's confusion around what we're actually doing because point three of the recommendation points that out. It says that council make a submission regarding the terms and grant criteria. So we're not paying for money, we are making a submission and I support a submission going in so we can be part of the criteria, be part of the terms of reference that, that is, you know, put down for this funding process and, you know, the phone goes both ways. I would imagine that the state member is very much across this and there's no reason that he can't reach out to his local government to offer support in the process.
With no further debate, we'll put the item, those in favour, unanimous. Moving on to report MM ten twenty twenty-three. This has been an ongoing matter for council regarding the red fleet matter. Recently, the, the government announced that they're referring the, the matter to the Public Accounts Committee for, to, to look at the issue and see if there can be a better way of the accounting practices for this so it doesn't throw a cost shift onto councils. And given this is a significant area of concern for our council, I think it's important that we make a submission to that committee to try and get this resolved in a positive way. Councillor Jurd.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Firstly, I just want to say we could not survive without our rural fire brigade, they are absolutely amazing. And a lot of them are just volunteers, so this, this can, this really concerns me that the state, is it state or federal? That a state, yeah, state has stopped the funding. So the way I read this is, will, will the fire, like rural fire brigade have to fund themselves if state don't come to board and, and keep funding?
No, this matter is, what the matter's about is in regards to the accounting practices of the fire trucks. So I definitely agree with you on our full support for the rural fire service and the work they do in our community and this is in no way a reflection on them. But the, the way the accounting practice works for the rural site fire service fleet is the government centrally through New South Wales RFS buys the trucks, they allocate the trucks to a station and they dispose of the trucks. So there's, so they buy them, allocate them, dispose of those trucks. Yet there's an anomaly in the accounting practices that say, the, that is a disputed point. I, I might want to clarify, is a disputed point around that the assets, so those trucks are vested in councils and therefore the depreciation on those vehicles should be recorded on council's books. So we should wear the cost of the depreciation, which impacts our financial viability ratios on council services, so our council and dozens of councils across the state have pushed back on this and said, no, we aren't going to do that. And our council has previously resolved to just say a flat no, we, we don't record that depreciation. So the government has now said, okay, we'll review the matter and look at a better way to handle that depreciation. And that's now been referred to the Public Accounts Committee around this. So this isn't about the, the funding of those services, but more so about where the accounting and the depreciation is accounted for. And, and I think, I don't think there would be many people in the community that think the trucks that are bought by the state government and allocated by the state government and sold by the state government are the responsibility of council to depreciate when we have no control over them whatsoever. So that's the, the way we've taken this forward and that's why I'm wanting to put in a submission to make sure that we have that matter rectified.
Yeah, well, I remember at the road congress that, that was brought up at that, wasn't it, that we were at?
It's, yeah, it's been brought up.
I'm sure it was brought up at that, but my question, I'm a little confused though. Would we, you say it goes on to our asset, our depreciation assets, right? If the truck needs replacing, state replace it? That's where I'm getting a little confused on this whole asset thing.
Director.
Thank you, Miss Saval, yes councillor Jurd, the state does provide the funding for the acquisition and disposal of those assets. However, that does also come into the total cost of running the RFS and council does provide a certain percentage of that cost as well. So we're already incurring that cost and as the mayor rightly points out, this is about where the, the assets should sit and depreciation should sit and council's firmly of the view that they should sit on the state government.
Well, definitely, it should definitely sit with the state government, there's no doubt about that. But what I'm trying to understand is, it, it doesn't make sense why state would put it on to our books, that's the bit that's confusing.
Yeah, thank you, just to clarify the matter a little bit, this is part of the argument and discussion point across the state. Historically, a number of councils have registered those assets on their books. A number of other councils haven't. Cessnock is one of those councils that historically has never recognised those assets on our books. A number of years ago, it was determined that the RFS also wasn't doing that. So there was this big fleet of vehicles that were sitting out there and being brought, purchased, used, moved around the state, disposed of and blown up in various cases and they weren't getting recognised anywhere. So the audit office and the treasury have centrally declared in their viewpoint that they should sit with councils.
Yep.
And there's a number of accounting positions and opinions that are otherwise. So council's firmly of the view, which is backed by LG New South Wales, that they are not our assets and they should sit with the state in recognising the ownership and control, disposal and depreciation of those assets. Has nothing to do whatsoever with the funding of the RFS or the operations of the RFS.
Well, quickly one last question, so who maintains these, these fire trucks?
The RFS does.
RFS, that's a lot to put on them when they're volunteers, thank you.
Not the volunteers.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, thanks Chairman. I, I just, this is just typical of our state governments and how they're moving costs over to local government all the time. It's easy for them to do that because they are our controlling body as well. And they just move the costs over to us, it was like the Labour government when they put the tax on waste back in the nineties. And now we've got another Labour government doing it to us again. It just seems, it seems to be a good way of making their books look better and meet their commitments yet make it harder for councils to survive. And we, we need the rural fire service, but the ownership should remain always with the state government and it should be the state government's responsibility to supply these machines and equipment to these people that volunteer their time to look after our community. They're a valued asset, these people, they're hard to come by, to get volunteers and they put in, they, they put their lives on the line to save the community, yet here we are with the state government saying, we're not paying for, we're not, we don't want to account for that on our books, you count for it in your books and go abroad and we won't and we'll look good. But then they'll, they'll stand up and take the glory when there's a fatal opportunity. So I think that we need to be firm with the state government and say, we don't want any more of your debts, we don't want any more of your bills, we want more, we want more funding off you and we don't want to be the ones that's bearing the cost to look after the community. Especially like the infrastructure that they're slowing down around the state, yet they can't tell on every, every community that you've got to grow and you've got to put in more infrastructure, yet they're not, they're slowing down their infrastructure, state and federally. Um and making it harder and harder for the community to get the infrastructure that they need to be able to survive in the communities like our hospital. It's hundred and ten million dollars we got, I don't know how long ago, and still nothing's been, haven't even turned a piece of dirt yet. Um it it's just, it it's just ridiculous the way things operate and uh I just think that some someone needs to have a good hard look at themselves. Our politicians are are not doing the job they were elected to do. They're um, I always say, career politicians are only there for themselves, they're only there looking after their own career, they're not looking after the people. Uh that's that's quite evident in what's happening with our state and federal governments at the moment and over the last five to ten years. It's very disappointing and as an independent, I think that the more independents we get involved in council, the better in council, state and federal, the better we'll have because these people have to be accountable, not hide behind an A L P or a liberal banner.
Thank you. Counselor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. As a liberal person. The double dip of the R S F here is double dipping for sure, because I've just done my insurance on my home and and I was charged fire fire levy for fire stations now and fire brigades. So they're double dipping also off the public. And now they're also trying to double dip off the the government councils. So I feel we should be writing an email to these uh against this and uh make a stance on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And to to uh clarify for councillor Moors as well, that's the emergency services levy. Uh and I'm sure, I think there's an inquiry coming into that, which we will, I'm sure, make a submission to, but emergency services are funded through uh multiple ways of ins- on insurance policies by state government taxes on on their policies, stamp duties and uh by councils. I think we pay, I think it's eleven point seven percent, I I think. Um on on that from, direct from council funds for across rural fire service. Um New South Wales, uh fire and rescue, S E S, the broader emergency services. So um we cover all of them as as well. So uh we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. M M eleven uh twenty twenty three. Someone moving that way, uh councillor Hill. Oh, yep, sorry, I'm moving that way. Um on this, this is the results of the uh General Manager's uh Employment Arrangements Committee. Um they've been circulated, so happy to move that way. Counselor Olson.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll um move that this report be deferred till February so that councils get the opportunity to read the ranking system that went through, it was only handed to me tonight when I walked in the door. Um I haven't had a chance to read that. I think it's about, I don't know what, twenty four pages there. I haven't had a chance to even really read it. Um I think deferral is the only way to go so all councils get to understand what happened in that meeting.
Is the motion seconded? Uh seconded, so we need, that's a procedural motion, we'll put the procedural motion. Those in favour of the procedural motion? Councillors Watten, uh Olson and Judd, those against? Councillor Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell. Uh I'll declare it lost. Uh we'll now move on to dealing with that item. Is there any further debate? Councillor Judd.
Um I'll have to vote no because I only just got that paperwork just before I sat down too, so I haven't had a chance to read it. Thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, just clear the reason why I voted the way I voted is um the committee and the um meeting was webcast. Ev- every council had an opportunity to attend that meeting and had input. And um so I'm comfortable with it to go to go ahead.
Counselor Olson, do you, do you have your button on?
Didn't someone else want to speak before me?
No.
No? No one else wants to speak? Oh, jeez, that's unusually unusual. Uh I'll just, on what councillor Painter said there, I was in the middle of New Zealand hiking a mountain when the meeting was on and I never got the opportunity to get on that on that Zoom. So unfortunately, I didn't hear that. But um anyway. I my my problem is that during the last, this term of council and since the general manager's been here, I've been having complaints put in about, I've been putting in uh emails to get with actions for residents and not getting any responses. I sent an email to the general manager asking why I'm not getting any responses. I sent him a list of eight email uh questions I put in, I'd been waiting eight weeks without a response. His response to me was, he's got ninety days to respond, and that that is totally incorrect. The policy says five working days. I put that to him and he said, our charter says we can do it in ninety days. I don't care what his charter is. The policy is five working days and we haven't got a response. To me, to support the general manager as doing his job has been let down immensely by that, and those issues I've raised have not been rectified, have not been put back to me. And that was one big cross. If you cannot answer an email to a council and give an honest answer because that was not the policy, the policy is five days. If I'm wrong, prove me wrong right here and now, don't put a censure motion on me. Because I know the policy, I've got it here in front of me. And you can have all your charters you want inside that room outside there, but that's the policy, the council policy, endorsed policy, and the general manager has to abide by that. And he hasn't. And so there's no way I will be supporting anything that says the general manager is doing a good ju- good job when he can't get an email right to me and give me the right information. And it's very disappointing that a man's on so much money but can't even, can't even do the job properly and and make he, get his staff to work properly. I've had that many staff come to me complaining about he's, he's a bully, eh how he treats.
Counselor Olson, I I'm gonna pull you up there. You're you're straying on um what is I believe uh bringing cancer into disrepute and and.
Sorry, please, what have I done wrong?
I, councillor Olson, it is an active disorder um for you to under clause fifteen eleven D to insult and make makes unfavorable personal remarks or imputes improper motives to any other council official or alleges a breach of council's code of conduct.
Okay, so that's the.
So I am uh given that, um uh I think it is important that uh I asked you to retract uh and apologize uh without reservation, which is under clause fifteen twelve C. Uh where the chairperson can require a councillor to retract, uh apologize uh without reservation for any statement that constitutes an act of disorder referred to in clause fifteen eleven D.
There's been a lot of chatter going on here. I couldn't hear a word you said.
So uh as I've outlined, councillors, councillors. The gallery, the gallery will be quiet. As I've outlined, uh I believe your comments uh are a, an active disorder under clause fifteen eleven D in the Code of Meeting Practice. Uh and as such, under clause fifteen twelve uh C, I am requiring you to uh retract and apologize without reservation uh for any statement that constitutes an act of disorder referred to in clause fifteen eleven D and E.
Yeah, look, I'm sorry, general manager, I really don't, I'm sorry, I repeated something I was told. I I apologized unreservedly. I shouldn't have said it. Now, now to the mayor, could you ask the general manager why he doesn't abide by the Code of Meeting Practice and the Code of Conduct, what we're supposed to follow, where he's supposed to respond in five days? Could you ask him why he doesn't do that, please?
Counselor Olson, I'm I'm sure if you uh believe the general manager is not uh following the policies, you can lodge a complaint through the Code of Conduct uh system uh against to me as the mayor.
You as the mayor who defends the general manager. So that, so the general manager can do what he likes. He can send that email out to me. I've got copies of the email that will go nowhere because the the because I'm on the wrong side of the table. But we've got a a general manager that doesn't abide by the policies, but yet every time.
Counselor Olson, you're straying again.
Straying out, it's exactly what he said to me. I've got copies of the emails at home if you want me to bring them in for you. It's what he told me. He doesn't have to follow this policy, right? I have to follow every policy. I get criticised for everything I say and do. I get told by a lot of people out there what's what's going on in this council. And I I I get very frustrated. I get very frustrated that people get defended. The man never even applied for the job. He was brought in after the applications were closed. So how is that fair to everyone else? It's not confidential, can't be confidential. Applications weren't confidential. The person who, the interview part was, but the him not putting an application in was never confidential.
Counselor Olson, I think you're straying very far from what this motion is about.
Yeah, it's about supporting the general manager and I can't support him when he hasn't done his job. He hasn't done his job.
And this is not an opportunity to reset the performance review. This is an opportunity to either endorse the minutes of the committee that you were invited to attend and are a member of the committee, or don't endorse the.
And as I said to you, I was in New Zealand having a holiday, like everyone else is entitled to do, to have holidays. And I was nowhere near a Zoom uh camera, so I'd be able to speak, to tune into the meeting. And so I wasn't, I never had the opportunity. But I am, I am saying my concerns are here and they're true and they're real. And I'm very concerned about how our council's been run and the leadership we have in this council.
Councillor Hill. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Ms Savell. Uh just a few questions in follow-up for councillor Olson on this matter. Um you mentioned that you're away overseas during the time of the of the review committee meeting. Were you aware of when that meeting was gonna be held prior to your booking the holiday? Because for an issue that you are very passionate about, I will admit. Um it it seems like perhaps it's it's an issue that you would like to become more involved in at council. Uh where in the committee that you have the opportunity to raise these concerns about.
Counselor Olson.
So are you asking me to cancel my holidays after I've booked and paid for everything?
I'm just asking if you're aware of when.
The question was, were you aware of the meeting before you booked the holiday?
You're asking me wh- whether I should have cancelled my holidays because.
No, I'm asking if you're aware of when the committee meeting was.
Not until after I went away.
No, that's okay, excellent. My second question would be, um were you able to pass along your concerns to an additional another councillor who was a member on that committee for them to be raised at the committee meeting?
Uh I don't uh know how anyone could raise my concerns when they're my concerns.
But if you share them with another councillor, could that other councillor not raise them at the committee for them to be dealt with?
Uh I could have done whatever I wanted to do, but I didn't.
Yep.
This is my point in term, time to make.
Okay, we're not here to debate, we're not here to debate.
And the third question would be, are are you able to provide other councillors with the um policy in question that you state the G M is using in reference to not answering your s- your statements? The general, you you state that the, under your understanding of a policy that's in place, the general manager must respond within five days. Uh and are you able to forward that to other councillors sort of on notice?
The policy, if you if you all went and looked on the policies, you'll find that that's.
Yeah, but there are quite a number of policies on council's website. Are you able to help identify it? If you've got it, if you've got it at hand, can, yeah, thank you, that's all.
No further debate. Let's put the item, all those in favour. Uh councillor Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Savell, those against, councillors Olson and councillor Judd. I'll declare it carried. Uh moving on to motions of urgency. No motions of urgency. Uh port uh G M U ten twenty twenty three. Uh moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Those in favour, no, no debate, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh G M U eleven uh twenty twenty three. Minnesota extraordinary order and risk committee meeting, uh councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I'm happy to move that way. I'd like to add an additional uh dot point if I could, please.
Yep.
Um just hoping it comes up on the screen for me. No, that's okay. Yeah, that uh the additional dot point is that council notes that the final audit report was not endorsed by the committee as the Audit Office had not completed its audit and was not in a position to provide a finalised audit opinion. I'd just like to quickly speak to that.
So is it seconded councillor Burke? Yep, oh.
Yeah, uh thank you, Mr Mayor. Um it's it's quite simple, really. Um why I've added this is the um, if you were to just read the agenda of the council uh meeting tonight, it's a little bit misleading uh in the fact that uh the way the motion was put to the Audit Committee um did not accurately accurately reflect council's position on this. And this is simply to clarify to the community that it wasn't actually an issue with council itself, that it was actually no more than the Audit Office hadn't provided the um qualified or unqualified opinion to actually be reported to council.
Thank you. No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh port G M U twelve twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hill. Seconded councillor Sander. Uh no debate, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Report P E forty two twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded, uh councillor Burke. Uh debates, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was still thinking with in the G U M ones. Um page ten of the enclosures of this report says what the powers of this policy is. One which I think stands out the most and really shouldn't be a part of council's responsibilities. It states this empowers council as a leader for action on climate change. Powerful statement, don't you think? Furthermore, it states the governments have made commitments regarding greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets, which a hundred and ninety five countries in two thousand and fifteen signed up to the United Nations Paris Agreement on climate change to achieve net zero. I really suggest people to actually look into this and see for yourself what the plan is. The target of next zero emissions is a guiding principle for decision-making in the Hunter Regional Planning oh Plan two twenty forty one document. You all remember the one I was talking about when I asked about smart cities? Or should I say fifteen minute neighbourhoods like in that plan, where they are reducing private use vehicles. One of the principles wants council to implement a decision-making approach that is based on the best scientific evidence available. That sentence alone is extremely concerning. You think this doesn't affect you, but point six fourteen of the policy says develop a Cessnock greenhouse gas emissions inventory using regional data and establish baseline emissions for the region. Undertake regular monitoring so that council knows if the actions being employed to reduce emissions are succeeding and can amend actions if required. Yet here in this document, you do not say what you plan to do, only how you are, how you plan on enforcing this policy. How do you have the public interest at heart if the public do not know what you have a plan to achieve your net zero targets? I voted against this once and I'll vote against it again. The cost alone of four point four million that is taking funds off our road. This policy is a disgrace, to say the least. Our fleet go E V, do you even know the cost of the charging stations? Cost to install them, because the last time I asked council in the meeting about the Apex Park, no one knew the answer. But I do now, from an E V government webinar I was on. The cost starts at five and a half thousand for a single port A C thirty two A three phase twenty two kilowatt and jumps up to eighty thousand for a dual point D C fifty kilowatt charger. Then the prices change depending on the charging time. What in our fleet is actually changing? Garbage trucks, tractors, lawnmowers, utes, cars or the Everest? Because I know for a fact that a couple on that list are not going to change to E Vs. So again, I vote no to taking money off our roads. We all know that we desperately need that money for them, as we know that we need two hundred and fifty million just to bring our assets up to a standard of three out of five, and that's not even perfect, but definitely a lot safer. Councils should be sticking to roads and rubbish instead of wasting our rates on this. It's definitely not in the public interest, in my opinion.
Counselor Olson.
Yeah, thanks, uh chairman. Um we have a climate change policy that was implemented back in May last uh twenty twenty. And we're going to have all these E Vs and all that. Yet you've got a diesel vehicle. And the general manager's got one. Why aren't we leading by example and getting E Vs for the mayor and the general manager? I know you I know that you you're entitled to have a vehicle under the policy and you can get, you can get whatever you you can get whatever vehicle you like under the policy. You could go and get yourself a Ferrari if you wanted. But if we're going. Well, that's not my fault. That's not my fault. But you don't have to talk, they don't have to talk while I'm talking. I get in trouble if I talk when yous are talking. Anyway, um why aren't we? Anyway, um, why aren't we as councillors and, and the mayor and the general manager leading by example and getting rid of our four wheel drive diesel vehicles and getting E Vs? Why are we forcing other people to look after the climate and you, you pair aren't? Why is it that we're so special that we can have a four wheel drive diesel, not electric? Why is it? Why aren't we showing by leadership, a policy that we voted on? A policy that we supported, the majority supported, I can't say we all supported. It's a policy that was brought into place to save the, save the environment. And yet here we are, the leaders of the, of our, 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 our council are still driving around and, and not only recently got new vehicles that are, the diesel, not, not electric. Why is it we can't lead by example? Why is it we expect others to do what we're, what they're told to do, yet we don't do it, we're, what we're telling them to do? Do as I say, do as, do as I do. This is, this is the, the problem with this council here again, when we look at how, how we're doing, how we run this council. We put in these policies and then we go out and buy a diesel four wheel drive so we can take caravans around and go on holidays. And this is, this is wrong, that if we expect other people to say, we, we've got a climate change problem, yet we're not going to do anything about it. We're just going to sit back and we're going to do, do what we want to do and we're going to be what we want to be. And that, is that, is that good leadership? That's poor leadership as far as I'm concerned, if you expect other people to buy E Vs, you expect the council staff to run around in E Vs, we should be leading by example and getting E Vs for everybody. Not just those of selected few that want to be using it for different reasons.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Savell, uh, when this policy initially came up, I was quite outspoken about it because I thought the money could be used elsewhere, the, the money that we, we need to input into putting this policy into place. And, uh, you know, we've got a housing crisis, we've got a lot of things going on in the community. And I, I spoke about that back then and I'm not going to reiterate all those concerns, although I still do have them and I think everyone still does. But, um, I've, I just, I can never get on board with the, um, net zero emissions by twenty fifty. I, I just can't. Um, I know that's what we signed up to under the Paris Agreement and that's what it's all, uh, designed around. And that's what we're looking to enforce or, you know, um, build around. I just see it as an exercise in futility because I just can't see it happening. I just think it's impossible. I feel, I feel like there's a lot of contradictions whenever we talk about these kinds of things. Um, and so I just want to make sure that, um, my points go out with that, that they consist of what I mentioned last time, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a question, that down, like, what were you saying about the, the thing? If you come to meetings of, of, uh, committee meetings, this, this is all ironed out by people and telling us all about what's going on. So you can't see the focus of it because you're not there and not listening to what is going on, you know? So you're only really looking at what you're reading in here. It's pretty hard to comprehend. Thank you.
You've already asked a question before Councillor, uh, Hill closes debate?
Question back, so what exactly am I not understanding, like, if there's a couple of bullet points here that, you know, I might be missing the complete point, maybe I didn't attend the committee meeting. What are some general factors there that you're like, yep, I can. It's in general, like you just mentioned that I'm not there at the committee when they're discussing these things.
Yeah, we're, we're straying, straying from, from this, so, um, closing debate, Councillor Hill.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Savell. I, um, just, I guess, two points to make in closing there, um, I noted Councillor Watten referenced the, uh, like, his, his position on previous climate change discussions, um, which was, I think, I believe, I believe was in relation to the climate change resilience plan, which just to make the clarity of this is a separate policy compared to that one as well, yep. Um, and, and I think, you know, I can, Councillor Watten, I can have disagreements on this and I think that's, that's fair for him to hold those points as well, but I think I'd like to express my position on, on this policy being put in place, um, sort of opposite to the, to the point made about it's all sign, it kind of feels fruitless that we can make this attempt, I think that it's, it's, it's the responsibility of, um, our, us, our current generation, uh, myself as a younger person included, to do what we can to, to try to preserve the, uh, the environment for future generations. You know, if it takes, um, a little bit of giving up, you know, if I, if I, my next car I buy is an electric car as an attempt to sort of help this, uh, move forward, that's something that I would be willing to do myself, um, to help the future generations. You know, if we continue to trend, this, the temperatures continue to increase as it is, I can, I can barely put up with the hot weather as you can imagine as it is now. Um, and if, if we're, if we hit that, that point that the, the Paris Agreement is attempting to restrict, if we hit that point of one point five to two degrees, uh, of warming, that then it sort of spirals out of control and, and nothing, nothing that we can do. No limiting of, of coal power at that point would, would slow, it would slow down the critical disaster. And I, um, I really would worry about future generations, I, I just hope that we can do what we can to try to help, um, even if it's a smaller input.
Thank you, no further debate, we'll put the item, those in favour. Councillors, uh, Moors, Dunn, Burke, you know, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell, those against. Councillors Jackson, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Um, moving on to report P E forty three twenty twenty three, moving that way, Councillor Hill. Seconded, Councillor Sander. Speaking, Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just quickly, could you ex, um, explain what a development control plan is and what it does? Just roughly, so that.
Sorry. Direct, uh. Through you, Mr Mayor, development control plan, effectively the standards or controls that council requires applicants and itself to apply to applications when they come before council.
Thank you very much. So this report on page forty seven of the enclosures is discussing the E L local centre, E two commercial centre and the M U one mixed use zones of Cessnock, Curry, Curry, Brankston and Weston. We've talked about neighbourhood centres before and, and this document is going into what these neighbourhood centres will be able to do. They want to maximise entries and display windows of retail to minimise blank walls, to out, to allow for outlook to, to and surveillance of the street. And that's, security grills may be fitted internally behind the glazed shop fronts and are, and are to be fully retractable and at least fifty percent transparent when closed. Unsure why there, there are security grills for retail shops in the D C P. Like our planning documents, it goes into building designs like height setbacks from the street, et cetera. But under warnings, it said are to be provided to all active street frontages. This is meaning new and existing buildings. But who is paying for it? The business owner or the rate payer? Garbage storage areas are not permitted along the primary or secondary street frontage, where will they go? Changes to South Avenue properties. It's important the frontages along that road are visually prominent to the proposed future bypass route, Snape to James Street. Did the development of high quality commercial retailers encourage on these sites? What about the housing along that corridor? Changes to Coles and Cessnock Plaza with the car park and the blank walls and to add weather protection? I thought Cessnock council didn't own these sites, not that Coles doesn't need something done, I just don't know if this is suggesting residents are paying for it. But bigger changes to the C P A, so, I always get this one wrong, C P A C and Cumberland Street car parks, with developing a multi level car park sleeved with ground level retail slash active street frontages and the rooftop as a hotel slash motel accommodation or private apartments or affordable housing, with potential for council to move to Cumberland Street. This is just Cessnock's controls, let alone Curry, Curry, Brankston and Weston. Please go have a read of this document and you will see the shop, see the shop top housing that is strongly encouraged for the redevelopment of the former works club, Good Year Auto Care and the King, Kingsway Plaza site in Curry, Curry of up to three stories. Has council reached out to these businesses to inform them of the changes that will affect their business massively? Thank you.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I just want to, um, pick up on something that Councillor Jurd just mentioned, just with the windows, um, and the shop fronts being, um, upgraded or having changes done, would that be for existing businesses?
Director, through you, Mr Mayor, these controls which come out of the master plans that were developed for the three major centres, um, would only apply when an application is being considered. So no, they wouldn't be retrospectively applied to existing premises unless they were looking to redevelop or expand or that type of thing.
Thank you, so the, the businesses that are currently open in Cessnock, Curry, Weston, wherever can, uh, have some peace of mind that this won't affect them. Um, I do also, uh, want to say, just in regards to, uh, residential being on top of shop fronts, um, if, if some research is done, it actually enhances a C B D. It actually enhances business, it encourages night time trade, uh, it's actually very beneficial, uh, for the local area.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, Martin, so, um, the upgrades to this, to these shops by these, um, businesses will be at the shop or the business's expense, not put onto the rate payer, is that correct?
Correct, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, yes, that's correct, it would be the applicant who would be lodging the, the application. Um, and the cost of any upgrades required would be imposed on a consent and they would have to do the upgrades.
Okay, and just one last question, the, um, as far as residential goes and top, top of shop fronts, that would, would obviously done at, um, the developer's expense according to, um, their market research and their, um, viability of whether that's going to be, um, appropriate for them or not.
That's correct, and at this stage, it's very difficult to get shop top, um, shop, shop top accommodation.
Yep.
Because from a feasibility point of view, it's just not viable. But at one, some point it will become viable when the land values get to a certain point.
Yep.
Um, and that's what we're encouraging. We were restricted in providing residential fat buildings within the commercial centres because of flooding in a lot of areas, so that's the option we chose, the council chose as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Jurd, you have a question?
I just got a quick question, um, because I mentioned in, in my statement too about the warnings. But on the map it says, note, warnings are required for all active street frontages. So that does mean existing buildings will have to do front, uh, wouldn't it mean they have to do warnings? Because it says all, yeah, no, warnings are required for all active frontages.
Director, through you, Mr Mayor, that's correct, if and when they lodge a development, an application to undertake works on that building.
So it's, they won't have to, like, change it now because in there it was talking about Lang Street, Barton Street and Curry, Curry that was actually going to have to put warnings the way I read it.
Through you, Mr Mayor, unless there's an application before council, um, the, the, the D C doesn't apply. So there, there wouldn't be a, um, requirement for existing premises if they're not undertaking development to provide warnings.
Thank you so much for understanding my questions and that you understand that it's okay for me to ask these, thank you.
Is there a question, Councillor Olson?
Yeah, I'd, a que- question from listening to this conversation here. If I go down the street and find an empty shop and I want to open a new business in there, I have to put a D A into council. Then that will mean I have to make sure the windows, uh, are done the way council says in this report. The grills behind the window, the warnings have to be done, is that correct?
Lodges a development application and these provisions apply, the, the assessment officer would assess the application, application against these requirements.
Yeah.
Um, and then will make a determination, um, whether they should be applied or shouldn't be applied because of his flexibility. But generally, the, the controls that are in the D C P would be considered when the application is being assessed.
So, yeah, so any existing shop in Cessnock or Curry or whatever, um, if they want to upgrade or someone wants to put a new business in, they're going to be, these, these rules and regulations will be put in place so that they have to put the warnings on, the windows in, as per council's guidelines. And that could put costs above what the businesses are available to open up. It might put restrictions on a business that might be, like, there's a lot of new businesses come into town and they're only here for three months and then they fail or for whatever reasons or they move on or whatever, family can't stay by it. And this is putting, I think this is putting a, a fair bit of costs on to, on to new businesses in the community. And I, I think we should be more encouraging new businesses to come into town. Um, it would, it would probably encourage businesses to move into places like down in the Coles and Woolies complex where there's no costs to be, have to be applied by, on that sort of stuff. And, uh, it's going to make our main street even harder to, 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 um, maintain a business, uh, businesses in the, your main street. So I'm sort of, I'm, I'm very nervous about all these rules and regulations that we're bringing in. So many rules and regulations, so many changes, so many things that's part of this policy. Policy changes, we're going to really struggle with, uh, some things in our town, so, yeah, I can't support it tonight.
Um, I might just, at this point, ask a question of the, the director, just to clarify some of the information, um, regards to the, um, questions and comments that have just been made. Um, you stated before around existing, um, shop franchises. So if someone has an existing shop front and just wants to do minor internal works to fit out the shop for, from one retail shop to another retail shop, are they likely to be impacted by these changes? Or is it only something that if you're doing major shop renovations where you're renovating the front and knocking things down and doing major works, then you have to comply?
It depends, through you, Mr Mayor, it depends on the, the extent of the alterations, a lot of change of use. Minor alterations are covered by complying development, don't require development consent. Um, so they wouldn't be applied, but if you're doing major alterations, demolishing and reconstruction, these development guidelines would be considered, they're, they're not mandatory, they don't have to be applied. They're considered when the council is considering and assessing an application.
Thank you, um. Councillor. Councillor Moors. Oh, I, I don't believe anyone had the floor at the time, it was, uh, things, but, uh, about to, to call, uh, Councillor Moors to, to speak, so, um, but I will remind councillors to, uh, yeah, please. The, 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 the microphones tonight are difficult to hear at the best of times. So, um, please keep your comments, um, just to when you're speaking. Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to the planning, uh, my questions are asked is that, you, with these new guidelines that you're bringing in, I brought these in myself over eighteen years ago. Councillor Bob Bedford's here tonight, he will tell you, I put big mesh gates on the detailing centre and the sound place and I put big, big gates out the back and, uh, a jail inside to lock the audio away. And was told by council it was a poor response as you were driving into town, that all my windows were all barred up and I bricked all the windows in because I was sick of repairing the windows. So now you're virtually going now the same way with your new guidelines. Don't you think you'll kill the main street with them, with the cost of dollars, a cent of, of, excuse me, Mayor, are you talking or am I talking?
Yep, I thought we were asked the question, so.
Don't worry about it, she's right.
We've asked the question, so, Councillor Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, um, can I say these aren't new guidelines, these chapters exist at the moment and they, these controls currently apply in Cessnock, um, and Brankston. And what they're proposing to do is, it's, um, also apply the relevant controls to Curry and to Weston because of the master planning work that's been done there. And there's some generic requirements being applied to the other centres. So these controls already apply to the two major centres within Cessnock, um, and they've been in place for years.
If, if you're re renovating and you're doing a major renovating, you've got to put bars on the inside of your windows.
I didn't, through you, Mr Mayor, I didn't say it was mandatory, I said it was a consideration.
Well, all right, let me considerate something to you. I went rushing down, I went rushing down on, on the other night when I thought the library was on fire. If the shop they were trying to get into had a roller shutters on there, if you're going to put bars on the inside of windows, how the hell does fire brigade get into them shops? Where is the safety and the exits?
Do you want to answer that question or? So that was a question to the.
Yeah, that's a question.
Through you, Mr Mayor, uh, look, they're existing controls, I'll take that question on notice and get back to you.
Thank you.
Councillor Hill, in closing debate.
Thank you, Mr Savell, I, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment to the planning staff who have, uh, assisted in putting this together. Through, in the past, um, we've seen a number of applications. Through in the past, um we've seen a number of applications come to council with higher dev- uh higher density housing um in areas sort of close to the C B D but not in the C B D, and we've noted that um some of this is not in in reference to the the preference of residents who live further than from the C B D. And I've made the comment previously that can we, what attempts could we make to sort of try to push high density development into the main areas of the C B D like shop top housing stuff, and I'm I'm glad to see this this uh D C P update include Curry. Um because we we made the comment ourselves um about a number of shop fronts in Curry that we think could could sustain some shop top housing and help to bring some more life into the C B D, so I'm glad to see that as an addition um as well.
Um debates being closed on this one.
I was a bit slow to the punch there, so I do apologize, but just with the the questions that have come up in during debate and the questions taken on notice. Shall we defer this until we come back, so we've got a proper chance to have the the questions come back from notice?
We're we're too late at this point to to do that, we've had the debate and we've we've closed debate, so. Yeah, um so I need to deal with the motion that's in front of us, so uh those in favour um councillors Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell, those against councillor Moore's, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh moving on to P E forty four twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Noted, look, councillor Hill.
I'm I'm, thank you, Miss Savell, I um I certainly had a quick look through this uh development performance monitoring report this this week and I noted a few a few interesting points, it's um I was quite positive to see that our council falls um below the average time for processing uh D As uh compared to the state, the seventy five day timeframe for average and the mean being down to forty eight, which I think shows a more accurate sort of portrayal of the majority of D As being processed through. Um with with about an average of of what I what I thought I calculated to be about three D As uh a day, which I think for a for a single quarter of the of the year is is pretty pretty on point for our performance, I know that there are outliers that take an additional amount of time. Um but for the majority, it moved through pretty well, I um I will also note that this report indicates um council's large amount of subdivision going on, two hundred and twenty subdivision lots with eighty five percent of that occurring down in Bellbird um and also in Head and Greeter. So uh I think that's another a key point to keep in mind in regards to our continuing continual lobbying to the state government for increased um services and infrastructure for these fast growing areas.
Thank you, no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh report C C eighty twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Sander. No debates, all those in favour. Uh councillor Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell, those against councillor Olson, councillor Jurd, declare it carried. Uh report uh C C eighty one twenty twenty three, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander, no debates, put the item, all those.
We on C C eighty one?
C C eighty one.
Yeah, interesting, code of conduct complaints, if I wasn't on council, they probably wouldn't have to do a report, thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I just don't know why a person would actually consider that a badge of honour, it's absolutely beyond me that it's costing council so much money.
We have a point of order.
Who said it was a badge of honour? I think it's an absolute joke, you keep putting them on me.
It's not a point of order. Not a point of order. No. There's no debate, let's put the item, all those in favour. Councillor Councillors Moore's, it's councillor Jackson's hand up, I'm not yet councillor Jackson, Moore's, uh Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell, those against councillor Olson, councillor Jurd. Uh moving on to C C eighty two, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded uh councillor Sander. Uh speaking councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Miss Mayor, um this report lacks a little bit of information for me, as we know, it's um it's impossible to get to all the committee meetings. And I feel like I don't have enough information from this report to be able to make a decision on it, the office officers' report, um the S P O uh seven slash twenty twenty three is confidential, and the only information provided that I can see is the recommend- recommendation to note the information of recent discussion for property purchases and endorse further discussions for the potential purchase of sixty three and seventy three Vincent Street, Cessnock prior to council approval, so I'm really not sure what I'd be voting on for there, so I'm gonna have to vote no.
Okay, councillor Olson.
Yeah, I've raised this issue many a times about these reports, as a councillor, we don't get all the information. And this is a report that these general public are sitting out here to tonight, li- reading what they got there, and they have no idea what we're voting on. The public don't aren't seeing what we're voting on, some of the councillors don't know what we're voting on, but we're voting on it, and they've been complaining about this for years and years and years, and nothing's changed.
Councillor Hill, in closing debate.
Thank you, Miss Savell, um disappointing to hear that that's the position that the councillors have, I I my comment, I guess, to to the councillors who've made that comment is that uh members of other councillors who are able to attend these um these meetings, if you would be willing to reach out to us when you have, if you haven't been able to find documents or content, there um the I believe that um the director of corporate might be able to advise the minutes and the agenda, or the agenda, I should say, of this committee meeting would have been made available to councillors before the meeting itself. Which then provides a great deal of information, albeit not the discussions that were had at the committee, but at least the upfront information, including the confidential section that you're able to see yourself, and then you would be then able to also input a question in to sort of get some more information from either staff or other councillors who attended on what occurred at the meeting.
Uh no further debate, let's put the item, all those in favour, councillor Jackson, Moore's, uh Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell, those against councillors Olson and Jurd. Um C C eighty three, uh any unreasonable customer conduct report, moving that way. Uh councillor Hill, seconded uh councillor uh Burke, uh speaking councillor Grine. Sorry, councillor Jurd, sorry.
I see mine light up, light up red, but I've seen your face over there. Uh I just wanna ask, does this include the councillors, and I mean residents attacking councillors, because this seems to take complaints seriously for staff and just doesn't seem the same for us, I'm also concerned about the cost to the rate payer of ongoing investigations into conduct. I've had this issue raised by several rate payers, can council confirm how much each in- in- investigation costs? And how this potentially impacts on rate payers in addition to that, some rate payers are wanting to know what budget does the money for these complaints and investigations come from? And are they missing out on other things being funded or attended to because of these costs?
So a question for the director.
Um thank you, councillor Jurd, I thi- I think it's very important to realise that the unreasonable um customer conduct report is not linked to the code of conduct um issues that have been raised previously, um the majority or all of the unreasonable customer conduct complaints that we receive are handled in-house through my governance section, and um whilst there would certainly be some staff time involved in dealing and reviewing those matters, um they're not external investigations as has to occur with the code of conduct, so please don't um combine the two issues, they are totally separate processes. And the figures and the numbers in the unreasonable uh customer conduct um reports are ones that have been lodged, and they may or may not include just council staff.
Thank you, um just quickly though, so you know how I've just touched on to the fact that this talks about how we how staff are being looked after, do we have a report that comes back if there's ever been a complaint against a resident that's attacked a councillor, does that report ever come back to council?
Director.
Um thank you councillor Jurd, um that would only come back and be captured in this if after the investigation um that customer was determined to have exhibited unreasonable conduct and hence had some sort of restrictions applied um to that conduct.
Okay, I just thought that the one that I put in would have come back, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, no, no further debates, let's put the item, all those in favour. Uh councillors uh Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, it's unanimous, yeah. You're too slow at putting it up, I I did look. Um the investment report, C C eighty four, uh moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Uh no debate, let's put the item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh C C eighty five, resolutions tracking report, move councillor Burke, seconded councillor Grine. Uh no debates, let's put the item, it's unanimous. Uh report W I uh forty four, uh tender for regional skate park, move councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Dunn. Um speaking on that, councillor Hawkins.
Thanks Mister Mayor, um this is a great news story for Cessnock, I think, um this original skate facility, something for our youth that they'll not only be able to do, they'll be able to be proud of, um we're often criticised that there's nothing for the youth to do in in town. Um I could rattle off a list as long as your arm, this will certainly be a a jewel in the crown of uh youth activities, um so I would I would fully commend this report and support this facility, I can't wait until it opens, I'm not much of a skateboarder myself, but I I'll certainly be along to watch the demonstrations and and those sorts of things, um I I think this is a great, a great thing, um partially grant funded from the federal government, I believe, we we need to thank for that, um as well as developer contributions, because it's been in our master plan, it's it's been a long time coming. Um this is, this is great work, thank you and congratulations to the staff for getting this to the point where we're at now. Um I I understand one of the delays in construction is that the company are involved in other projects, that they've got to finish off around the state before they can they can get to ours, um and and I certainly hope that reflects the quality of their work, that they are a top notch facility provider, and it's it's something we can we can look forward to um out at the basin, it it's a great facility, it's only getting better. And um I would commend the staff for this report, thank you.
Yeah, councillor Jurd.
Oh, thank you Mister Mayor, um I went to the pop up session of of this skate park and it does look amazing what they're planning to do. Can I just clarify, uh how much are we actually paying though, because it says there the lump sum of two million and twenty one thousand, how much of that is grant and how much is ours?
Director of Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you Mister Mayor, um councillor Jurd, it's it's a combination of federal funding and developer contributions that will fund the skate park, so there's there's no funding from council per se.
I'm sorry, I'm really, really.
Sorry, there is it, there is a million dollars of federal funding, as councillor Hawkins mentioned, um and the remainder is developer contributions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, um just just a quick question though, um you know, it just, it is a lot of money and and whatnot, did we, I know you's probably have done this, but I didn't think to ask this question with the pop up session, was there any ever just thought about keeping the existing skate park and just making it bigger? To to keep costs down and maybe actually make it a bit a
Just to, sorry, just to jump in on you, I think you're confusing the Bridges Hill.
No, no, I'm I'm saying the skate ball that we've already got.
Bridges Hill.
Yeah.
This one is at Mount View, opposite Mount View High at the basin.
Oh, okay, so I thought it was, because I thought with there being the pop up, sorry.
Yeah.
There you go, no worries.
No, there was two.
Okay, no worries, keep those on notice, the questions I just had for the other one, thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you Mister Mayor, um just a couple of quick things, I do I do wish to thank the staff for the amount of work they've done with regards to getting the plans together and also um the applications for grant funding, um federally, um the the money that came from the federal funding, um I'd like to um point out and thank the the work for from uh councillor Fitzgibbon in the previous council. Um the amount of work she did with regards to motions and lobbying for funding for this, um it it definitely is now bearing fruit as far as us being able to do the work on the ground, um as councillor Hawkins would be aware, um this was a project of councillor Bertram Bercham's in in councillor Hawkins's um last term of council. And when I came onto council, it was the first thing I I moved to do, and after seven years to see this actually be awarded, this tender um to actually start to come to fruition is a fantastic thing, both for us as a council and the community. Um it is regionally regionally significant, and it does bring families and communities together, and where it's situated next to the high school in the basin, it's a perfectly positioned um skate park to allow the community to fully take access to it, so I do commend the staff and I do support this motion.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Savell, um I just wanna echo that those sentiments for the the work put into obtaining the the funding for this. Uh for someone that has not only like teenage kids, but also works a lot with young people through um you know, the young people through the um L G A, they're always hoping for things to do. Um so I'm really happy to see this happen, so I'm looking forward to seeing the the ground broken and yeah, bring it on.
Thank you, no further debates, let's put the item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh report W I uh forty five twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Burke. Uh speaking councillor Hawkins.
Thank you Mister Mayor, look, just briefly, um there's a number of of assets that council have out in this area that are nearing the end of their life, that are at various states, um we've recently been able to address quite a few of those through grant funding. Um and these things do take time, I wish we could do them a lot quicker, um but material availability, there's process to be worked through, um human resources as well, I I think they're all all a big factor, but I'd like to commend this report and this bridge improvement, um I think it'll go a long way to easing the peace of mind for residents out there, um so yeah, I I I think this will be a good improvement to this part of the city, thank you.
Yeah, councillor Jurd.
Thank you Mister Mayor, um I've got a little bit of concerns about this one, not that I don't want the bridge fixed, because we all want this bread bridge uh bridge fixed, um because it's the only access for these residents. They can't get, at the moment, the garbage trucks over it, water carts cutting over it, and Fire Brigade can't get over it unless it's a really small one, and that's a huge huge safety concern, what my concerns with the way we wanna fix it, because I'm not no engineer, it seems a little strange that we would put a concrete top or steel top over um existing timber that's already got a weight limit on it, so is this actually gonna fix the problem?
Is that a question for the director, Director of Works and Infrastructure?
Thank you Mister Mayor, um thank you councillor Jurd, um yes, it will, um the the design of the the new bridge structure is uh fully independent of the old bridge structure that is underneath, um we have to retain the heritage value of the existing bridge. But it will it will have no weight bearing on on the new bridge itself, so the new bridge will be fully rated.
Yeah, so will it then take away the restrictions of the seven point five ton?
Yes.
So there'll be no restrictions, that's all, I just wanna make sure that we're actually fixing the problem, that we've got the issue there, thank you so much.
Yes.
I just wanna, if I could ask one more question on that, you said the the existing bridge is heritage listed, is that correct? Yeah, so so and this bridge is gonna be above it, what happens to the bridge underneath it, is it gonna, it's gonna eventually fail and rot away, so is that gonna cause problems for when there's a flood coming through or something like that with the timber under there, or do we have to maintain it, or is there anything we've got to do with that?
Director.
Thank you, um councillor Olson, uh as as far as I'm aware, the heritage value of the bridge is to be retained. The operation or content of the bridges is no longer needed, however, we don't have the ability to remove the structure.
Yep.
Um it has to naturally decay, um there is a a risk of debris um in a a high flood event. But that is minor compared to the bridge being wiped out, um the other the other um advantage though is that when the bridge does finally decay and erode there's a larger opening under the the existing bridge, which will help with the waterway area.
Okay, thank you.
No further debate. No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh report W I uh forty six, twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Dunn. Uh speaking councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Again, just briefly, um it, it's wonderful to see these projects getting to the. Tender awarding and moving into the construction or reconstruction phase. Um this, again, I understand this has been a lot of work for our staff and and. To um procure these services. So I, I would commend to them their work. Um. It, there's a lot of frustrated residents out there, but I think they're, they're accepting of the, the challenges that we face. Um once these natural events occur, um so yeah, thank you to the staff and. Let's hope that these can be completed safely and efficiently. And that hopefully life can get back to normal for the residents out there that have endured these sorts of restrictions for quite a long time. Um it, it's, it's something that's regrettable, but. We are working through it and I think that's good to see. I think it will be appreciated by the communities out there. So thank you again.
Councillor Judd.
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just want to get a little bit of clarification on, on, in the report. It says the remaining six site Murray's Run. Is budgeted in the twenty twenty three, twenty four operational plan for two thousand, two hundred and sixteen thousand, sorry. The quoted price for Murray's Run alone was two hundred and ninety five thousand plus fifteen thousand internal costs. Thus, this approval will require an additional ninety one thousand dollar budget to be managed under the overall operational plan. So I'm just wanting to make sure, because I know that uh was it five out of the six sites were grant and then this sixth site we would have to put money to. So just, if we authorize this tonight, how much are we actually authorising, is what I'm trying to ask?
Director.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um councillor Judd, um the amount is for the entire works. Um the, the federal funding, uh sorry, the, the state funding is for the five. The, the five locations. Uh Murray's Run is, is funded through council, it's not part of the, the natural disasters event itself. It was an ongoing uh slip issue. Um and for the purpose of being able to get value for money from a single contractor with a level of expertise. Um we've, we've requested to put that in for the operational um component from council's budget for this year.
Yeah, no, that, I understood that part. I just was wondering how much we are actually authorising to get it done at the same time.
I, I just, if I just clarify the question. So I think the question is around, is council tonight authorising any more money? Or has the money for the Murray's Run Bridge already been authorised by council in the operational plan?
If that's the case, and then just how much did we actually authorise? Because I'm just a bit confused by that sentence, because it was. Two sixteen, then it was two ninety five plus fifteen, and then ninety one budget. I just, it's, there's a lot of numbers, I just wanted to get.
I understand. Um I, I'll have to start that question on notice and provide you with that information.
Very much.
Yep.
Uh no further questions. Uh put the motion, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh report W I forty eight, twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Uh speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Um it's fantastic, once again, as we have in the previous years, to see um. The, the Curragh Nostalgia Festival um event coming back up in the calendar. And I think it's uh once again, as we have previously, important for council to uh to offer this in-kind support for. An event that brings a great deal of people um into our community for this event, not also noting that the uh. This is the, next year will be the twentieth anniversary of the nostalgia festival. It's frightening that it's uh closing in on, it's almost as old as I am. Um and the additional point is that um. There's been a great deal of public works being undertaken by our, our, our Works Department in Curry. Uh the C B D upgrade and the Colbran Rotary Park upgrade as well, which we hope to see come to fruition, uh should be before this uh event takes place next year. Um and it'll be uh just a fantastic to get so many people coming into our town to see all these fantastic upgrades uh that we've provided. To help uh sell our little town.
Councillor Painter.
I'd like to um echo um councillor Hill's comments that. Um the in-kind support that council gives to this um festival is, is great. Um twenty years of um, you know, showcasing Curry to um the wider community and um. Especially L G A is money and investment, I think, well, well spent. It's a great community event and it really showcases the town and all the new works that have been going on in the Curry area. Um so people can have a, a good look and a, and a nice walk around the area and see what's been going on. Fantastic.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, this is a great thing for Curry. Uh it's well talked about. From Singleton, Musselbrooks, going right down straight the way into Newcastle, so I reckon this will be one huge event. Great thing for Curry. Also, while I've got the mic, before we get to the end, I'd like to thank the council. And all the people involved for collecting the uh goods for the homeless people and distributing it out. Thank you very much indeed. I really appreciate it and so did them. They told me about it on Saturday night at the charity for homeless. Thank you.
No further debate. We'll uh put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh W I forty nine, Minister of Traffic Committee, moving councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Hill. Uh no debate, put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh councillor reports. No councillor reports. Uh we'll now move into the confidential session that's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Sander. Uh all those in favour. Uh councillors, Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander. Uh Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watton and Saval, those. Olsen and councillor Judd. Uh I'll declare it carried. Uh we'll now uh clear the gallery. Thank you, councillors. Uh in a report from the uh confidential session of uh council meeting. Uh in relation to report uh G M U thirteen, twenty twenty three, uh council resolved the following. Uh one, that the investigation report into the code of conduct matter concerning councillor Olsen, provided by separate confidential enclosure, be received and noted. Two, that the oral submission from councillor Olsen in addressing the investigator's recommendation be received and noted. Three, uh council adopt the recommendation made by the investigator in the investigation report. Four, councillor Olsen be formally censured in accordance with clause four four G of the Local Government Act for breaching clauses. Three point one A, B, C and G of the Sessnock City Council Code of Conduct. And the matter be referred to the Office of Local Government for further action under the misconduct provisions of the Local Government Act. With that, I'll close the meeting. Thank you. With that, I'll close the meeting. Thank you.